I have told you, it's seven o'clock, so let's start by reading the hearing. Notice in the top of the agenda and then we'll start. So according to Master of the Law's Chapter Forty, Asexualism, notice hereby given in Bolton Zone and what it did, hold up. Continuation of public hearing on Tuesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, seven PM, in Houghton Building at six ninety-seven in East Street, both in Hare and Acton, in that occasion, Mister River, Road Development LLC, in the Shenmee Center, Pharaoh, D.C. The secret conference permit. The proposed housing development to be located in Bolton Residential Zone District, on St. Mary River, approved by downressess's map, eight B, in Pasol, thirty-two, approximately six point six eight acres. That is secret conference permit to instruct me, units of home ownership, or certain master law, chapter forty B, the development will consist of four two-unit duplex-style buildings located in two lots, each containing two duplex buildings. In accordance with Master of the Law chapter forty B, the development will contain two affordable housing units. The agenda topics for tonight. We suspect we'll have a partial update from the applicant, and we have our period new technical consultant, Wesley Witten, your representative here, so she can give the responses to the applicant's revised plans and some of the documentation they've been providing. And then we'll see what the time permits us to get into review of Department of Butter comments, but if not, we'll have the next hearing fully for those items.
Sure. If we do have time, we'd really like to go through some of the department comments because I believe we do have representation from board, health, I think fire at some point's going to show up, and then conservation, so it would be helpful to get their input.
That's right. So let's start with the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, hermes of the board, good evening. Before we start, I notice you only have four members this evening?
Mm-hmm. So procedure-wise, so we have our voting members. Our fifth voting member has had a surgery, but he will take advantage of the tapes.
He can mullins in. Okay, just wanted to make sure we're going to have a full floor.
So we're going to have a full board. We were on full board.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
I can bring that up, I was going to mention that. We rely on the taping minutes for the popular party to stay calm.
Excellent, thank you. So what I'd like to do, in keeping with your schedule, I'll be brief, but what I was hoping to do is just give you a quick report on what we've sort of accomplished since we've last met. You'll recall Attorney Robbins was here in my place at the last meeting. And then, so here, put on what we've done, what we're now working on, and then provide the board any information or questions you might have, and obviously, if you want to go into comments and responses from the town boards, we're happy to do so. So as you know, Duchal and Dillis did submit revised plans and responses to the Horsey-Witten first review, and I understand that we also just received a second set of responses from Horsey-Witten earlier today. So that has kind of been our focus. Obviously, we need to get the project at a point where things are starting to be solidified so that we can then respond to some of the other concerns. It's difficult to, I know there's been repeated questions concerning things like the wetlands, excuse me, the landscape plan, some of the wetland filings, things like that, but, and I know you've heard this, but I need to say it again, to the extent some of those things are still, the project's still fluid and changing, you know, it's difficult for us to give you a true, say for the landscaping, we can't give you the true final representation if something's going to change and we're going to have to redo it. We don't want to have to redo things and provide you with all these iterations. So we are going to give you everything you've asked for. I'm just trying to get through some of the technical reviews so that we know buildings are in the place they're going to be, driveways, stuff, you know, septic, things like that. So that, in my mind, has been a big focus, and we need to finalize that as quickly as we can, so, and you'll hear a little bit of that later, I believe. We've provided written responses to the various town boards, committees, and commissions that we have received, and lastly, my office provided written comments and written responses to a number of the Butter and Neighbor comment letters, emails, et cetera. I know Mr. Puznola shared with me, just shared with me a listing, his listing, of all of the comment letters and things that have been submitted, so what we'll do is check that newest list against all the letters and emails that we responded to, and if there's any in that list that we haven't, over the next week or two, I'll get you written responses to any of those so that we're on the same page that we've addressed, you know, all of the letters and all of the comments.
I thought just, can I interrupt just for a second?
Sure.
All of the comments to date, I've been putting them to Dropbox, so I just want to make sure I sent the link to Melissa and to Seth, so I just want to make sure that you knew that, that as I get more comments, I'll just keep updating that Dropbox.
Great. Melissa keeps me up to speed, she does.
I want to, before we get on a roll, so the reference list that you talked about was that, the list that's in the letter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll continue to try to track that.
Okay.
That, the letter that I supplied to the board is something that I'll do before each meeting. I apologize, it seems like it's a short timeframe, but what I'd like to do is purposely do that so that I can capture as much of correspondence as possible. More rolled in today, so that's not reflected in the letter, but...
It's a castleway, for sure, it just continues to add.
So we will continue to make sure that we have provided you written responses to everything as it continues to roll in and we check the list. I do want to address two issues that I believe you discussed at the last meeting, and they seem kind of random, but I just want to jump on these two so that we can address them before we get into more detailed discussions on the technical review. At the last meeting, there was a question, I believe raised, about whether or not we could provide a leveling area for the driveway out at the main road, and I understand from our engineers that we have or can do that, but there was also a pending request by the DPW to install some type of cover or pipe in that area for future drainage projects that the DPW might be doing out on the street. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? And I guess there's sort of a conflict of whether we can achieve both, so I just want to respond to that sort of inquiry and question with, I guess my suggestion would be that we'll have our engineers speak with your engineer and find out from the DPW director exactly what they're looking for and see if we can accommodate both. It just seems like a logical way to maybe get to the end of that rather than changing things and then finding out, well, but we wanted that, not that. So I understand that was an issue that was outstanding, maybe the engineers will prove me wrong.
Erica, was there a paper letter to that, or was that just...
Yeah, there's an email from Jill, and she's our DPW director. That's in your package.
So we're sure we can resolve that. I also got word that the fire chief of the fire department had requested that we look at providing better access to the rear of the buildings for, you know, foot traffic to get around the buildings easier, and in speaking with Seth, he's indicated that we could provide steps or walkway steps between the buildings so that responders could have easy access to the back of the building. So I suspect that may be a change that we will see sooner than later. It is our intention to meet with the fire chief again, or, you know, the fire department safety officers, and go over sort of where we were when we originally met with your, the prior chief, and then the new chief came in, had some new different ideas. As you know, we went the route of looking into the fire pond and all of that, so there's been a lot of stuff going on with that, but I think we're at a point now where we're prepared to sit down with the chief and go over all of our proposed answers to his responses. That way, he could potentially generate a new letter to this board opining, in fact, whether we've met all of his requirements or not, but we do believe we have the ability to do that. So those are just two things that we are continuing to work on. I just wanted to let you know, you know, where we were with those. I'm going to hold off, the last issue I want to touch on are wetlands and some of the questions and issues that have been raised regarding wetlands on the site and our filings with the local conservation commission as well as natural heritage. I do understand it was discussed at the last meeting, but as one might expect, I have my two cents to throw in there, but I think I'll wait because it sounds like we're going to try and get to the department letters, and I know the conservation agent is here, so maybe that will be part of that discussion.
May I ask one brief question on that subject? I see all of the responses to that particular area, wetlands and danger species, et cetera, are all to be done after the permit process. That is not the way I want to work. I want to see what we're dealing with before we get to that point. And, you know, that to me is just getting the sand down the road. Let's find out what the problems are, if they're any, and then we'll deal with them. Somehow to have this thing thrown out, we're supposed to approve something we don't have data on, so I would like to speed that process up so that it falls within the window that we're working with.
I am prepared to file with natural heritage in very short order. However, before I can do that, I want to make sure that we are far enough along down the engineering review process so that I can reassure that there are not going to be any major revisions to this process, because the last thing I want to do is go back to natural heritage, define a work area for them, work through, you know, whether it's a no-take letter, or whether it's the need for a conservation management permit, whatever the process that natural heritage dictates, we fully intend and are required under the law to follow that, but what I don't want to do is go do that, find out that we've run into a problem or a required change, and have to go back to them and say, oh, it's changed again.
Does that fit within our deadline, minus twenty-third?
I would say yes, at this point, that we certainly will, should be able, well, yeah, we should very well be able, assuming we can get to that point in the engineering review by next month, that'll give me a couple of months to do that process. The filing with the local commission is more problematic. We have requested certain waivers from this board that we will utilize, if they're granted, in filing with your local, with the conservation commission under the local regulations. If I file without those waivers, in our likelihood, there's a good chance that the project's going to get denied at the local level, which is not really the process that forty-B anticipates either. So my hands are somewhat tied with respect to a filing under the local bylaw with the local conservation commission, and it is certainly within our right, and we've done it many times, that we hold off filing under the local regulation until we find out what, if any, waivers we are granted, because it makes, as you can imagine, a huge difference. The question of the State Wetlands Protection Act and the application, we're all in agreement here that this project will have to satisfy all of the requirements under the Wetlands Protection Act through your local conservation commission. Now, we feel very confident that we have a good understanding of where the wetland line is, or where the wetland lines are, the state jurisdictional wetland lines are. You know that this site had gone to gone in Enrad in the past, or conditions that had been extended, and although we're not legally coming in and saying we don't need to do a new review of the wetlands, what I am saying is, we have taken that information and we have relied on it as being accurate. Now, I know that some combination of Horsey-Witten, conservation agent, I don't know if Erica was there, someone was there, there was a site visit done to look at the site and to look at wetlands, there were two areas identified that could potentially be state jurisdictional wetlands. We have gone out and reviewed those two areas as suggested, and in fact, in one instance, we have put it on the plan as a new wetland. So we've put that on the plan at the direction or the request of your folks, and we are designing around it and dealing with it as if it is a state jurisdictional wetland. My understanding, and I could be corrected once the experts start talking about it, is that the second area of interest that was pointed out had to do with the location of some flags, and the question of whether those flags were accurate and whether they should be moved. We did send our people, our wetland scientists out, they have looked at it, the word I get back is that they are very comfortable and confident with the location of those flags. I know there's been a request for the written logs of those tests, and we will get those to you this week, and we're going to kind of roll the dice on that one because we do feel that those couple of flags are accurate. If it turns out, once we're before your conservation commission, that science proves us wrong, we will have to move them and make whatever adjustments, but we're also fairly confident, and we're trying to do our design work to give us potentially some wiggle room that if we had to move the flags, it's a non, not a problem. So we're really not kicking that issue down the road as far as locations of state jurisdictional wetlands. There's been a lot of work done and a lot of studies done, and it's been reviewed and comments from your own conservation people. So we're moving forward with the understanding that we're accurate with our state wetland lines, and once we file with conservation commission, we'll know just how accurate we were. So your commission is going to have an opportunity to weigh in. We do have to meet the Wetlands Protection Act, but with all due respect, when it comes to the local regulations, we are allowed to seek some waivers, and we have, and without knowing whether we have those or not, A, not really comfortable filing. I could put the whole project in danger by doing so. So again, we will try to be responsive and provide you all the information we can regarding the wetlands and the wetland locations and floodplains and everything else, but that's really the process that we are sort of tied to.
Doug, what about filing an Enrad? I mean, I'd really like to see verification that the wetland resource areas are where they should be.
Well, they were just done not all that long ago, right? Three years?
There was never a notice filed or an Enrad issued. There was a notice of intent filed.
Well, in the notice of intent, didn't the commission verify the wetland line?
I wasn't here at the time, so I...
Well, you know, semantics here, I know you can file an Enrad, which is really just a request to have the wetlands delineated with all the time, especially with big projects where you've got to know where the wetlands are before you start putting buildings and roads and things like that. So that is always the logical case. I assume for the last project, the single-family home, that it was determined that they were very comfortable with where the wetland lines were, went straight to a notice of intent, and I know, based on my years of being on conservation commission and in dealing with conservation commissions, even if an Enrad's not filed, if a notice of intent's filed, conservation commission's going to review the wetland line, they're going to verify the wetland line is correct before they issue an order of conditions. I don't know a single commission that would take a filing on a notice of intent and just say, oh, it must be right. So I know you weren't here, and none of us probably were here, but I got to believe your conservation commission verified the wetlands before issuing an order of conditions on that house.
Sure. And Mr. Chairman, if I can speak to that?
For the audience, for the record.
Rebecca Longbaum, the conservation agent for the town, the bullpen, obviously. Every three years, so an Enrad or a notice of intent is good for three years. In the case of the single-family home, it was extended for that project only. We have the right as a commission and as the ZDA to request that you redelineate the wetlands after those three years, which we're past that point now. In addition to that, if you want to have the conversation of, okay, at that time, we looked at the resources, or the commission looked at the resources, because I wasn't there, like I said, maybe it was that they had approved those lines per that project. Now you've come before us, or come before the ZDA and stated, something's changed in the stream, now it's an intermittent, not a perennial. So there you go, there's one change right there after three years. So that, to me, just shows proof that we need to look at these resources and figure out what's actually on site, whether it's to your benefit or to the benefit of the resources.
I'm not sure it's quite right suggesting that because we showed that stream as intermittent, that we are suggesting that something's changed out there or that something was wrong. Our engineers labeled that as an intermittent stream because that's what it's shown on the state maps as intermittent, and so it's not unreasonable for an engineer to go to the state map, see that it's intermittent, and put it on as intermittent. I do now understand, because we've had this discussion, that at the time of the original project, there was a well-seasoned, reputable, remind me of the gentleman's name?
There are a couple offices involved.
Couple offices involved, but, oh, Arthur Allen, from EcoTech, was the gentleman who did the original wetland delineation, which was accepted by the Bolton Conservation Commission. So, you know, we have faith in that work, and we've used it as a baseline for our filing. Again, we have, it has been suggested that there were some other spaces out there, or other places out there that could potentially be wetlands, and we've reacted to those comments, added one to the plan, reviewed the flags in the other instance. So again, we're feeling that we're very confident in that location. I will discuss with my client whether or not it makes sense for us to file an Enrad, but I have to tell you, it would only be under the state, under the state.
That's fine.
Because we're not going to go through the process of debating or haggling over local jurisdictional wetlands when in fact we may receive a waiver with regard to the locals. So it would be purely under the state, and I will discuss that with my client, and I will get back to you personally in short order.
So for those of us who are new to it, what do we talk, what type of work effort for that?
Well, the good news is that most of that work effort has been done. We have identified, either through our own analysis or in reviewing the work of Mr. Allen, where we believe the state jurisdictional wetlands are. We've shown them on our plan. The process of filing an Enrad is merely taking that plan with our shown wetlands, and of course, we'd have to flag them out in the field, and sending it to the commission and asking them to review and verify those locations. Typically, the commission or its agent, or even a third-party agent, will go out, do their own analysis of the flags, make sure they're in the right place, tweak them if they think they need to be tweaked, and then we meet with the commission and we discuss where the right location is, and then essentially, the commission, if they're comfortable that we've identified all the wetlands and they're in the right place, or the flags are in the right place, correctly shown on the plan, they essentially approve that. They approve it, and then we're allowed to rely on that for three years.
Is that, is that something that could be done within the timeframe of the aggressive schedule that we're sort of on?
I would suspect, I would suspect, given everything that's been done to date and the familiarity that everyone has with the site and the wetlands, that it could be in short order. But, you know, there are filing requirements, there's notification, no, no notification requirements on an Enrad, right? There isn't a...
No, but the ground would have to be thawed, so you can do odd or whole test holes to test for hydrogen.
So that's where, things that become problematic are, you know, we have a permit timeline beginning of the state, you know, so...
As I said, we'll discuss that.
Probably the thing would be great, but if it's something that, you know, all of a sudden, well, because the ground's frozen, we can't do it till, well, that's made become problematic, so we may have to, you know, come to some type of agreement that, as you said, we need to rely on conservation, work it on, and then changes that, we may show that, it's not going to be a surprise.
Right, and Mr. Chairman, there are, I guess, software applications, you could call them, I guess, unless Seth would like to define them otherwise, but using stream staffs and other things like that to define the perennial stream itself, that can be done as well. And it's more of testing the doctor way where you have to wait until a period of time when those criteria would be met, but there are other options that are under the state act that allow for you to define some of the resources that can...
Unless someone is suggesting that there is a perennial stream on the property that we have not identified at all, as opposed to identifying it as an intermittent stream versus perennial, I don't think we have an issue with the string, because irregardless of whether it's perennial or intermittent, I do not believe we're intruding on the 200-foot riparian zone in any event. So the, again, unless you're saying there's a stream out there that we haven't even mentioned...
Doug, I think there is an area of the stream that has been located up in this area here, so there is the potential that this 200-foot riverfront area could likely change. So I think there is some confirmation that needs to be done there.
Okay, well, as I said, we will get back to you by week's end and at least let you know what we're doing and what the schedule would be. I'm going to have to consult with my clients, and as long as we all understand where...
Does this also relate to the filing with natural heritage? Is it a NISA filing?
Yeah, there's separate filing.
So how does, how long does that take? It's my understanding that, so originally, in March, the only achievement of natural heritage said that what was valid for the single family was also valid for this one. Four months later, in your correspondence, she said, no, that's not valid anymore. And so another, so what's the timing on that?
It's only valid to the extent that your work area is unchanged. Quite frankly, natural heritage, once they define a work area, you know, and limit you to working within that area, they're not generally concerned about changes within that, you know, structures, structure location, structure sign, what they are adamant about is you stay within that work zone. My understanding is we have slightly enlarged our work area, meaning the earlier natural heritage determination for the work area of the single-family home, it's not applicable to our current design. Again, from a timing perspective, I have all the materials I will need to file, and that can be filed rather quickly, and I'm hoping, again, and I have not had time to review the latest comments on the engineering, but we will make a combined determination that if we think we're comfortable that, you know, while there still may be some tweaks and changes within the project, the work area is solid, I have no qualms about filing with natural heritage. Natural heritage has been very responsive, I have found over the last couple of years, especially on a project like this where there was already a review, and now this is just in a way an amended request or a modified request. So I think, again, I think if we're able to get to that comfort zone with respect to the delineation of the work area that'll be needed by January, I think we could file with natural heritage and have an answer certainly within the timeframe of your February-March schedule. Would you agree?
I can't pump in on that because at times, they've been relatively quick in responses, and at times they're not so great.
Oh, yeah, at times we're tied up forever, but again, maybe I'm being a little optimistic, but again, you know, this site is not new to them. The, as I understand, the modifications to the work area are not dramatic. We're not expanding the work zone, you know, by a hundred percent or fifty percent, it's something less than that, and again, given the site, the size of the site, the fact that there's a significant amount of the site that's wetlands and won't be touched, I think we're well within natural heritage's sort of ratios of, you know, for every acre you disturb, you've got to make sure you give us two that'll never be touched, kind of the thing, so. I will stick with my optimism and hope that if I file by January... So I will stick with my optimism and hope that if I file by January, I could be done with it by March. And again, that is a path we've already put the stuff together, so that when we get comfortable with the work zone, it's not going to change, I can file it. I'm just going to leave lag time and leave time. But it's a separate filing.
Okay.
It's under MISA with the Nat, with Natural Heritage.
And it's concurrent.
Obviously, copy and, you know, provide all to the local conservation commission as well. But although it is typical, when a project files an order of conditions, if any of the project site has habitat or is mapped habitat, you file with MISA simultaneously. So that's the way it's typically done. But if we're going to wait to file, we can, we can jump ahead and file with MISA first. With that, Mr. Chairman, I know Seth was prepared, if the board wants, just to give a quick sort of overview of, you know, the changes that were made from the last comment. And I know your engineers here as well and may want to, at this point, it's entirely up to you how much of that detail you want to hear and negotiate. I mean, I'd be honest, I tend to like, and I tend to like when the engineers keep it at a level we can all understand and talk about the big issues and how they're addressing them, as opposed to the munition of, you know, invert elevations and some of those things which we'll let them do that. Well, whatever you like, all the players are here. I'm happy to sit back and listen. I don't have to speak anymore. So again, at this point, Mr. Chairman, we're prepared to go as deep into that, you know, the engineering reviewers should like. And then, of course, if you want to jump into the comment letters, we're prepared to discuss that with you. And I, again, now that I've heard it, not only will we update all of our comments to any new letters, but we'll be prepared at the next minute meeting to really focus on the butters comments if you'd like. We could talk about them tonight, we're prepared, but get more prepared, you know, just...
So I do think we should look at, if there's been changes, what are the most recent changes about that? Not staring at, so let's look at that, and then from there, we can launch into, I'm assuming that addresses some of what you're already done.
So for the record, my name's Seth Donahoe. I'm with Charmandur Civil Design Group. We've met with Horstley Whitten regarding some of the proposed changes from their earlier letter, and we've incorporated those into our plan. I'll just give you a quick overview of what we've done there. One of the big things we were asked to do is complete soil testing in the proposed infiltration area, and so that's underneath the turnaround area. And the purpose of that is to show that the soils are suitable for the stormwater that we're proposing to put in that area. We completed three additional test holes in that area, very consistent results, and they were able to show that the system is indeed capable of receiving that stormwater runoff. We did revise the stormwater system in response to the peer review comments. The component that's in there, it changed from one company's proprietary system to another one that has a little bit more storage volume, and that was a better fit for the site to work with those comments. We've also incorporated a specialized catch basin that will provide some environmental protections in a smaller footprint. Those are all shown on the plan in great detail, but in general, the idea hasn't changed. Where we're going to be collecting the stormwater runoff into this area here. One of the changes that was made prior, we had some of the roof runoff going to the back of the site. Now we're proposing to put everything into the front of the site and collect it in that area. And we've had calculations and modeling that show that that area will pond to a certain level under the 100-year storm, and it won't overtop the rims of the structures that are there under that hypothetical storm event. One of the other changes we made was the board requested that we reduce the slope of the driveway at the intersection of the road, so we provided a 40-foot leveling area. Before, we were coming straight up from the road. Now we have a gradual slope from the road before it goes steeper, and then into a gradual slope into the turnaround area. And the final thing would be some minor drainage revisions. There's a trench grate at the front of the site to collect some of the runoff there. We revised that in response to our peer reviewer comments. And then, as Attorney Shane's touched on, we were asked from the DPW to provide some form of culvert under here, and we do have an issue where matching the pavement of Still River Road, that would put the culvert too low there. So while the prior design, where we came up steeper, allowed for some room there with the leveling area that we've incorporated, we don't have that. So our intention would be to meet with the DPW and see if we can come to a resolution. To my knowledge, down the road, there may be plans for improvements of Still River Road. I don't think they're in place now, so even if we were to put something there right now, it may not even be the right fit for what the town eventually does. So we'd like to meet with him and make sure that we can accommodate that while still meeting our peer reviewers' comments in that area as well.
Makes sense.
So that's a synopsis of the changes we made. If there's anything specific on...
Yeah, the width of the road.
So it's a, it's a 15-foot cave surface with a five-foot shoulder, and then at approximately, I think round numbers don't hold me to it, it's about 110 feet from the property line, it widens to 24 feet.
So when you say a shoulder, is that a gravel shoulder?
It is, a hardened gravel shoulder. So we're providing a 20-foot clear span to allow for the fire apparatus to get in.
Well, let's say an oil truck or some other commercial vehicle decides to get in there. I mean, I'm just, I'm just looking at the big picture here. Is it adequate to support that type of traffic? We have 24 cars, maybe minimum, in that area.
I mean, it would be, it's a much lesser length and a wider width than many of the common driveways that are serving multiple residences in town, where they would have the same scenario of people in school and an oil truck coming at the same time.
You know, a single fam, five single-family houses on a common driveway is five different than, you know, we have 12 units here with three or four people in each unit.
Absolutely, but the common drivers would have a turnout at a length that greatly exceeds what we're going to before we have a full two-vehicle with 24-foot width. So we have, we have a short distance where the two vehicles could be in place at a time completely feet, and with a straight road, they're going to see each other. We have, like I said, at 110 feet, we're at over 24 feet wide, so two vehicles could pass.
What would be the problem making a 24-foot wide road from an engineering standpoint?
It would more be a wetland standpoint. We would be pushing even closer to the wetlands and floodplain there. And so we've kind of balanced the environmental with what's a typical access to buildings in town here.
Mm-hmm. Can I ask just any other questions?
No, I think that's, I have some issues with the design, but you answered the question. Thank you. Want to ask some more? Okay. So, I didn't have Horstley Whitten.
Hey, my name is Jennifer Nardo. I'm with the Horstley Whitten Group. I'm a professional engineer that was brought on by the zoning board of appeals to conduct a peer review of the engineered design. Sorry, I have a bit of a cold, so I want to hop together, drink a water, I'm on my way. But I don't know if, have you talked about stormwater at all in any of your meetings?
No.
All right, so I'll try to give you like the big picture overview. And our letter also, my co-colleague Amy Ball is a professional wetland scientist, and she went and conducted a site visit with myself and Erica and Chandler. And so her comments are the beginning of the letter, but we kind of already talked about wetlands quite a bit. So I'm going to jump right into stormwater, because it's always the most exciting part of the meeting. Part of the Wetlands Protection Act requires that applicants meet the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook. And in that handbook, there's 10 standards that they are required to meet. And so our letter is basically based on those 10 standards and how an applicant can meet them, either they have or they, or they may need to tweak something, or it's, something's unclear, or there's calculations that are missed. So the first standard requires them to not cause any erosion in any wetlands or waters of the Commonwealth. So my initial comment was to verify that the runoff going towards Still River Road did not then cause erosion in the wetland in a different way, because they, I didn't believe that they were actually focusing on it. They were kind of showing was all going towards the, I mean, the whole thing is one big large wetland, basically. So, but there's runoff coming to the front, and I wanted to make sure that this runoff wasn't going and causing erosion in this wetland right in this corner. So the applicant has redone their watershed plan that kind of directs where the water is going and all different, it's either coming, it's going this way, this way, and there's a small portion that's going towards Still River. They are not necessarily able to reduce the flow from pre-existing conditions. So standard number two requires them to not increase their runoff from any point of the property to, and sometimes that can be considered at any point of a wetland system. So they are still increasing, it's only a very small amount, it's 0.21 cubic feet per second, which is very small, however, it is an increase coming from Still River. And I know the DPW did, I read the one comment that the DPW did ask for a culvert. Our recent letter that was just issued today, we had a letter that was originally in October, I believe, our first letter. The applicant responded to us, we received that letter December 10th, their response, and now today I did my follow-up response to Erica. But, so I would recommend that they try to capture this runoff in some way, and maybe they use rain gardens, which are just, could be small gardens at the front, that's a depression that the plants in, and it takes up nutrients as well as can deal with some of the additional flow, because it's such a small amount. Or maybe dry wells if it's, or, but I do think that working with the DPW and figuring out exactly what they're thinking about doing with this roadway runoff, and if there's a way to, you know, because it might be that the DPW is looking to put some type of a swale, a ditch, which kind of makes sense, a swale or a ditch, along this property within the right of way. I'm not sure what the DPW is thinking about, but if that's what they're looking into for the future, I would encourage the applicant to work with them on that, just because if they're going to put a, some type of a swale or a conveyance in the right of way, and then they get to this driveway, they're going to just have to rip up the driveway. So to manage it in some way prior to that would be useful. Otherwise, you just have ice flowing on the driveway and, I think, others still on the deal. So standard one, no erosion. Standard two, no increase of runoff off-site. And they're doing that by taking the roof runoff, which I did ask them to direct into this infiltration chamber, the subsurface infiltration chamber, all underneath the parking, the driveway, parking lot, which is very common practice. People do it all the time, it's a good system. They have an infiltration or an exfiltration rate that's reasonable, because they have done numerous soil test logs here to confirm the soils, and they also needed to confirm the seasonal high groundwater, or how high does the water get in the spring, or today, because this is very wet right now. Everything's high right now. So they have done some test bits. There was some errors, I believe, in their test logs, so they're, what the numbers are listed on the plan, I think maybe are not correct, but just a typographical error. But I'm concerned that they do not have the required separation between this groundwater and the bottom of their system right now, and I think that's because there was a, maybe just a small map error along the way. But they are required, under the Mass Stormwater Handbook, to have a two-feet of separation. So you have your infiltration system, and the water is supposed to go down before it hits the groundwater. And the groundwater fluctuates over this course of a year, but when it's really high, you want to make sure that there's some separation because of the groundwater's in the system, then it just doesn't work. So they're required to have at least a minimum of two feet, preferably four feet, but if they only have two feet, then they have to do a mounding analysis, which the goal of the mounding is to show that that groundwater, because now you've kind of brought everything to one point, all the water's coming into this infiltration system, and the mounding analysis will show that it doesn't, the groundwater isn't now drawn higher because it's all pushed in one spot. So the groundwater kind of comes up, and as long as it doesn't come into the chambers, into the system, we're okay. So that's their goal, to prove that, which they have provided a mounding analysis that appears accurate, but I think that they didn't have the right separation, so they'll have to look into that a little. So, just think about some of the minor potential toes. So my letter kind of, like, standard two is really about the calculations, and it kind of hits on other little points that they might have to make. Separation of groundwater is one of the bigger ones. This is some calculation, little tweaks here and there. Standard three is about recharge. According to Mass Highway, they have to recharge as much of the impervious area. Because it was a, well, is a meadow wooded area right now, that has a certain calculation for what water falls on it and gets, goes directly into the ground, that's their recharge value. They need to meet that again under proposed conditions, and they're doing that by putting in this subsurface infiltration system, by putting all of the impervious area, the roof runoff, majority of the parking lot, and the driveways under the ground, that meets their recharge. Standard four is about the total suspended solids and making sure that they're removing sediment and before it goes into the wetlands or anywhere else. So they have to get this sand or salt on the, on the parking lot, on the roadways, and it gets going to the catch basin. A catch basin has a certain percentage of total suspended solids, that the sediment gets stuck in that catch basin. It doesn't all get stuck, it's kind of moved down the pipe, so then there's another device that captures that much more. So their goal is to get 80% removal before it gets into the ground again. So they are meeting that with their design that they're proposing, because they have a catch basin, and they have a proprietary separator, a device that's going to just remove that much more of the sediments. And then they are infiltrating everything so they can meet their total suspended solid removal. So they're meeting a lot of their requirements, but they do have some map errors along the way, so they still have to go back and use some corrections according to my latest review. But they are kind of meeting each step along the way. Standard five is about if it's considered a land use with a higher potential platoon load, which would be like a gas station, or a junkyard, or a shopping center that has a lot of cars in it. A residential subdivision doesn't qualify as that, so they didn't have to do anything special. Standard six has to do with, if it's in the critical area, I've lost my pages, but if you're in a critical area, I should say, no, you're not in the critical area.
It's not.
You're not in the critical area. So critical area is if it's like a zone two, where there's a drinking water supply, if they, if there's a water well, that's a drinking water well in close proximity to the area, and it comes up on the map, then you just have to have more to so total suspended solid removal prior to infiltration. You have to do a couple of other steps, but they're not within a critical area, so they didn't have to do that. Standard seven is a redevelopment, they're not a redevelopment, so they didn't have to do that. Standard eight is about operation and maintenance, operation and maintenance. And so that, basically, they have to put together a plan that says each of their devices, all the stormwater will be managed and cleaned in some, some way of standard process. Basically, you're sweeping the streets, you're doing a regular clean out of the catch basins, you're cleaning out their infiltration chambers. They have a plan in place. We have a few comments regarding that plan, that they should add a few more things, that they need to be careful about the amount of sand and salt that's going on this because it's a critical area with a lot of, like, a lot of wetland resources. I'm concerned about the salt possibly that's going in this area, because what happens is you have a management company taking over multifamily development, and safety comes first, so salt and sand goes on. And so then, if there's a lot of sand, you really need to maintain your stormwater systems. So that's something that becomes a critical item for the, for a property owner or development. I, this will be have like a homeowner association associated with it.
Yes.
Yeah, so there'll be a, so their operation and maintenance plan will follow, be followed by this homeowners association. And they'll be required, so we really want to make sure that they hit all the pieces that have to do with the stormwater system, so that somebody is required to maintain it every year, that there's maybe some record, maybe it will go to the conservation commission saying that it's maintained, because it's important for the whole thing to work right, that it's being maintained and it's taken care of. Number nine is erosion control, one of them is erosion control during construction, and so they have erosion controls around the property, they have to have your soil stockpiles need to be away from the wetland area as much as possible, so you don't have sediment just piles, because you've all seen construction sites with the piles of dirt, and then it rains, that crazy, and then all of those other, so they have to have erosion controls to protect the edges of the property and protect the wetlands particularly. They'll have a construction entrance at the front, that's all the rocks and stones, with the goal being that the trucks that are on here do not track mud onto the road, the mud becomes the sediment, the sediment goes into the wetlands. It needs to be carefully monitored because the wetlands are so close. So it is, the wetlands are, I know we started with this, and I didn't want to go back to wetlands, but they, because they're so close, they're a very critical part of the whole design, and understanding exactly where they are is important for the layout of every piece of this. So, and standard 10 is required an illicit discharge, illicit stormwater, I got it wrong. So it's basically, the home, the property owner is saying that they are not tying their stormwater into the sewer system, or the sewer system into the stormwater, and so it's an illicit discharge, illicit connection. So the property owner needs to sign something that says that they are very much, that they are aware of the design, they're aware of the system that's in place, the stormwater system, the septic system, and that they're not tying the two together, and basically it's, so, in 10 years, somebody says, what happened, and they can't say, I didn't know that that was happening. So, it's more to make sure that everybody's upfront about what's going on in the property, everybody's aware, the property owner and the homeowners association signs the operation and maintenance plan, so that they're aware of every piece of it that's happening. So, it is, it's important for a flooding point of view, it's important for a drinking water point of view, because eventually, basically, thinking about from everybody's concerns, what goes into the wetlands eventually goes into our drinking water at some point, and it goes back through the cycle, and so, so, being concerned about things like pesticides and herbicides and fertilizers on the property, it is very close to a lot of wetlands, and not that it's, you know, it's, they're meeting their criteria, they're staying out of 25 foot. So, they, my biggest concern at the moment with the design is the separation to groundwater that they believed that they had met, and so, he's gonna spend a little time looking at my notes and figuring out what happened, and maybe I made a mistake, and maybe he misses it.
So that's the standard two?
That's standard two, yeah, so that's the biggest one, it's always here too, that's the one that has all the calculations that go along with it, that's the one we talked about, inverts, and making sure that everything matches. The other parts that we looked at was the propensity stories, so those are the 10 standards, so that's kind of bulk of my letter, is, uh, everything.
Could you elaborate a little more on number six, the critical areas, that is a lot of people that are concerned about the drinking water, and you kind of mentioned that they met that, or it's not applicable here?
Yeah, if they, if the project does not fall within a critical area, which is a zone two, pretty much a zone two is, you know, area like this, that would, that would be the one, because it's also shallow fish locations, and called a lot of fisheries, but a zone two, when you pull up your GIS mapping system, and you see your zone two, and it shades the whole area, if you're in that, in that area, you are considered in a critical zone, and you have to do extra precautions. But those extra precautions, just to make everybody feel a little bit better, is they have to have additional pretreatment on their system. So, pretreatment, they have to meet 44% TSS removal before it goes into an infiltration, so that the goal is to remove as much sediment before it can infiltrate, because you don't want to clog anything. Or, like, if there's oils and greases and stuff that fall on the parking lot, that also gets captured before it gets into the ground, because once it goes into that infiltration chamber, it's going into the groundwater. They have a catch basin that's up here, that's basically kind of, the roof runoff is considered clean, so that's going directly in, that's one of the things I requested, was that instead of having the roof runoff just fall through downspouts and leaders onto the pavement, and then that, because that just pulls all of the stuff that's on the driveway, you know, they have a pipe, sorry, they're piping it in separately, so that's considered clean, and they don't have to do anything more than just pipe it separately. There's a catch basin up here that's capturing the rest of this runoff that's coming out over this parking area. That catch basin ties, and there's also a trench drain that goes into the catch basin, but then that goes into a separator, proprietary separator. What kind did you put in here?
Storm scepter.
Storm scepter, which is a commonly used, so basically, it's like a large manhole that has a weir, and a lot of the sediment can go down the bottom, and it has this pipe that allows the oil to come up the top, and it separates everything out, and it allows for that much more removal. So they have the catch basin, then they have the separator, those two things give it the 44% that would be required if it was in the critical zone. So they're required to that, they're also required under a critical area to use particular practices, similar to, catch basins are acceptable practice, proprietary separators, the storm scepters are acceptable practice, an infiltration system that has had the pretreatment is a preferred practice. So, that means, the means that they're using is all preferred. Then we go back to the operation and maintenance, and making sure that they're not adding anything in to a critical area that could contaminate the groundwater, or could contaminate the drinking water. It could make it one more step in the operation and maintenance group, so that's the difference.
Just a quick question on the maintenance agreement, what is the, what is the monitoring of that, who does the monitoring?
Well, that may be up to this board, or maybe up to the conservation commission, because this application will go to the conservation commission, they tend to be a good board to require, because they could have a order of conditions that's kind of can be continued on forever, to require the applicant to submit some kind of, many towns, I don't know if you have done this for anybody else, but require applicants to annually submit their monitoring, or their testing, if they're sampling, or maybe they're doing a flow meter, like, you know, there's various testing requirements or sampling that can be done for different projects, depending on what their concerns are, and conservation commissions frequently will take that information, and you can just, you know, they have their thought, so it's recorded someplace, and it's kind of one of, it's almost like keeping everybody honest.
Yeah, well, that seems to be the problem, and all these, I was on the planning board for years, and we entered into agreements, and I don't know who's monitoring them anymore.
Yeah, and the planning boards have a harder time, and the zoning boards have a harder time, because you don't have anything to hold back on, you kind of, whatever your decision is, goes to the building inspector, and the building inspector will abide by your rules while they're building it, but conservation has a little bit more control, because they can have a order of conditions that can go on, because the wetlands don't go away.
So that's something we can, we can crack into.
Yeah, I know, but they, I've done a few of those, and everyone forgets about them.
Everyone leaves the board, just walks with the cracks.
Janet, would it be unreasonable to ask that they do soil testing to verify the infiltration rate? I know that they did soil testing, but to actually do it as an infiltration?
It's a permeability test, they can do.
The reason I, the reason that I think it's important is just for the fact that this is, all the runoff is going to infiltrate, we have this underground system, we can't see, there's no overflow to it, so if it's, if the soils aren't what we anticipate them to be, and we have runoff, if that system fills, and then we have runoff, it's gonna go right to the road.
Right.
That's my concern.
That's exactly what will happen to it, the runoff will go to the road, you'll start seeing it coming out that way, and that will be the visual, if the catch basin is bubbling up, it's because the infiltration system's not working. I don't, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to verify the permeability, they, under the Mass Stormwater Handbook, there is a method that they would, you know, they did just go out and do a bunch more test bits, I did question their initial exfiltration rate, because they have, in the Stormwater Handbook, there's multiple soils, and there's hydraulic soil group A, B, C, D, D being the worst, and it's basically muck, and you can't, nothing, or lead or clay. A is like beach sand, it just poured in and it's gone. So, they, but there's different levels of A, B, C, A has really gray, or A has, and B has pretty good. So, fine sandy loam was what I was reading on their test fit logs, which is at the bottom of their logs, and fine sandy loam is considered a B, they, sand and gravel, or fine sand is considered an A. So, they were able to provide information on their soil logs, and showed that the fine sandy loam, or the fine sand, the sand and gravel was in the area that will be infiltrated. And I really wanted to see the most restrictive layer being the one, but I went back to the Stormwater Handbook and made sure that as they were explaining it, is how the Stormwater Handbook was requiring it, and I had to agree with their process. So, they have, they're infiltrating basically in the sand, and that is showing that it's a, it's an A, it's not a great A, but it's a good A, and so it's a 2.41, so, inches per hour, it's one of those numbers that you're proving.
So Seth, could you guys do a permeability test, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we'll have to see, I mean, they've done four test holes in the area already, and they're all consistent at this point, and of course, if anything unsuitable is encountered during construction, it would be replaced with suitable material, but we'll talk with the client.
Does that mean new tests, or is that just looking at something else, looking more deeply, detailed than what they're already done?
They have to go out, dig a hole, and actually use a special monitoring physometer thing that they pull up, it does a test, it's a different test, they use it under border health and septic systems, we have always done percolation tests, many people maybe have septic systems in their yard, and you've seen these tests, but the percolation test is not an acceptable test to be done for stormwater systems, very, we usually do it all the time, DP says not anymore, so we have to stop, so now we have to apply physometers.
Can the test be done at this time of year when the ground's?
Yeah, yeah, because you have to go below this frost, and you have to dig a hole, it's, you just want to go sooner than later, because the harder the ground gets, the harder the equipment is to dig, it's a big excavator to dig. So, my, my only other couple of things, we looked at the compensatory flood storage, which is this little gray area on there, that is what they are using for their, their new storage, it's not filled in, is it? Where they're filling.
There's a little piece here, and there's a tiny piece here.
There's a little bit of piece because of the road that is below the floodplain elevation, so it's a hundred-year floodplain, basically, the river comes up, it comes up to a certain elevation, and so that elevation is mapped, and they are having to fill because of the road, a little portion of that, it's only about a half a foot deep that they're filling, and so they are going to basically excavate a half a foot in this area, that's the darker gray, to make up for that, the goal is to make sure that the volume of water that they have now, you know, that they can't get there because they filled it, can get somewhere else, in the same floodplain area, but that's the intention of that. The one concern that when I spoke to Amy Ball about the wetlands is, if this area turns out to be a wetland, then you're excavating in a wetland, and then that's a different thing from natural habitat, we'll be more concerned about what you're, the fact that you're excavating an area that could be habitat proof. So, from an engineering point of view, this works, from a wetlands point of view, it might not work from a habitat point of view.
And how do we find that out, and when do we find that out?
When they talk to National Habitat, and get the word defined. Those two pieces, that's right. They keep coming back, the wetland, they keep coming back.
Did you have any concerns with border health issues, or is that not something?
I didn't, I didn't focus that much on the border health issues, I thought, I assumed that the border health was, it's a state program, so I assumed they were dealing with that. Is there a certain piece that you wanted to think about?
No, I just, I'm just curious, but, you know, we have no data on that at this point, so.
But the, the septic system for the border health?
I mean, we don't have any feedback from them, do we, at this point?
The only thing that they said was that it needs to meet Title V.
Yeah, that's it.
There's all these loose pieces trying to fall in here.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate each organization, I mean, each state permit, that's what it be, each state permit needs to, so they will have to meet the Title V for border health, if, but again, the local permit, so, one of the concerns with the conservation commission and requesting the waivers is, I think it would be helpful for the zoning board as well as the conservation commission to really understand which waivers of the local regulations they're asking for, is it, you know, all of them, or is it some specific ones that maybe the conservation commission would be more comfortable understanding, but...
I guess my major concern is you have a sewage infiltration treatment system, two of them, and then you have a stormwater infiltration system, and then you have wells all on a very small area.
Drinking wells?
Yes.
The drink wells, they're over 100 feet. So, the requirement for the subsurface infiltration system is that it needs to be at least 50 feet away from a subsurface wastewater system, so they have maintained that 50 feet setback, and the well has to be at least 100 feet away. So, that's the state requirements, and I think that there's something to be said for checking and monitoring, but...
Yeah, but the volumes of water here are much greater than the average single-family house lot, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, definitely, and that's, and therefore their septic systems do need to be relatively large, and, because it's eight, eight minutes, it's eight minutes, right? So they have large systems that will need to be under state permitting, it's just from the, be meeting that. I mean, I, we're, I just didn't look really much into the border health issues, I'm certainly able to.
I guess we just need from a comfort level some feedback, I guess from the border health there. I assume the border health, or whoever.
I don't, how else can I help? Any questions? I mean, I didn't read through all of my comments, but I assume that the applicant will respond to them.
It seems like at least the processes.
Yeah, we had a work session, just talked, do some of them.
At this time of year, so.
Yeah, we just received the comments.
Good work and leadership going on.
Yeah, 100%, we will reply to those, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tight site, they are requiring, you know, they're deserving a significant amount of conservation land, but there's a lot going on in a small area.
Mr. Chairman, Martha Remington, 447 Main Street, I'd like to ask the engineer, in her opinion, in taking into consideration the warming of the climate and the patterns of our environment as far as rain and everything changing, and the fact that 100-year flood zones are now being broken in very... the fact that 100-year flood zones are now being broken in very smaller amounts than 100 years. What do you think the condition of this development that went through would be in 10 or 20 years as far as the degradation of the wetland area? Is it going to be improved, the same, or really degraded?
Well, I am a believer in climate change, and I agree that I think that the floodplains are, are coming higher, and that we're getting more rain and more precipitation. I think development never helps wetlands. However, we are meeting the requirement, and they are allowed to build, and there's regulations to meet. I'm a rule follower, so I kind of go along with the rules, appreciating that sometimes you have to be a little bit overprotective of the design standards that you're being given. So adding, meeting the 100-year storm event, which is a seven, seven inches of rain over 24 hours period is a seven, is what's considered a 100-year storm event, that is going up. However, even though we've had all this rain lately, we've had multiple, like, almost one inch. I think a couple of, one of the storms we had in the last six weeks has been about an inch. There's been many right next to each other that was like, one was .75 and one was .62, but they haven't been seven-inch rainstorms week after week after week. So the design is for a large subsurface system, they do need to make sure that they have adequate separation to groundwater to make sure, because I think groundwater comes up with the floodplain. So I think, I wouldn't want to see any leeway in the separation, because that's just going to get smaller as the floodplains get higher. I definitely agree that we have more water. Right now, we're in a rare wet period, and sometimes, oh, the climate changes. It's scary. I, I agree that they're not going to improve the wetlands, I mean, but... But you can't really stop them either. I mean, I feel like, you know.
You have that sensitivity to that separation fact that you're talking about, so anything you see should be bandwidth narrow, too, too close, let, you know, certainly.
Right, right, right. Where two feet is the minimum, and four feet is the preferred, you know, you don't want it to be, you know, 1.8. You want it, you want to hold at least the two, the solid two feet.
Question here, a little bit back.
Anna Stacey Downey, 366 Still River Road. My question is that the flood maps that were used to locate where the floodplain was in this case, those get updated every so many years. Is that, that's correct, right?
That's correct.
Where are we in the cycle of those getting updated?
So this particular flood map, I believe it's from 2014.
2014?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my follow-up question to that is, in the general notes on, it was, I don't know what you'd call it, Plan Number C1, I think this question might be for, through the board or Mr. Navarro, but I'm not sure. There was a mention on General Note Number One that the topographical information shown on this plan was based on an underground survey on a vertical datum. These are all new words to me. But that that occurred in 1988, and I'm wondering if there's been any newer information?
If I can address that quickly? The 1988 reference, we have certain vertical datums, 1929 was the prior one, and that's where sea level is. And so the, the topographic information is referenced to the sea level that was established by the North American Vertical Datum 1988, which is, it correlates with the FEMA maps exactly. There is a movement to have a new datum now, not in place yet, but it's, it's not going to change. Our data is correctly referenced to FEMA maps, and if FEMA chooses to use a different one, we'll have a conversion factor so that everything will correlate again.
And that update would happen, is it every three years? No, it couldn't be, so 2014, is it every five years?
Sometimes they've done it, they've been hit with it in a couple of years in a row, or sometimes it, I have a feeling it has to do with FEMA's workload, I can't speak exactly how that's done, but it...
Thank you.
Annalisa Dante, Still River Road. I'm just curious if you have any information about the maintenance of all of this, if you, you know, feel that it meets the criteria it needs to meet. What is an estimated cost for the annual maintenance of this?
So typically, and they, they should have included that in their operation maintenance report, however, usually what housing authorities or homeowners associations do is hire consultants, contractors come in and annually flush out their infiltration system and clean out their catch basins. The catch basins should be inspected four times a year, but inspected means you look in the catch basin and you make sure that it's not all full of dirt and leaves and stuff. But cleaning it out is like, maybe they have a, there's a vac truck that basically looks kind of like an elephant, and it has raggy toes, and they suck out all junk, or it might be the clam shell where they kind of go in and they scoop it up like this. Because it's really only the infiltration system, the storm scepter, it's, there's not that many pieces, I would imagine that you're looking at like $1,000 a year. Is that, is that what you're reporting? Did you say $1,000, did you say more?
I don't know if it's specified in there yet, but we'll clarify.
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the operation maintenance, that they need to show what their budget is and who's responsible. Oh, that was the piece that says to be determined. They, they need to listen to that. But I would think it's $1,000, $8,000, it's, it's not an astronomical amount, it's whatever the contractors are giving.
It's going to be unreasonable to assume that it will definitely be taken care of because the cost side.
Right, yeah, you should assume that it will be taken care of, and they are, they need to take care of it.
I think we have a question, a little back there.
Hi, Pat Westward, John on Autumn Lane, the Port of Autumn Lane and Still River Road, and sort of across the street from this property. And I just have a couple of questions. One thing, I hear people say that you can't stop them, this is going to happen, when this happens, and I think that the property was paid for as a lot for one house, and that the understanding of the buyer that it was, is very clear that this is for one house, zone for one house, and that there are wetlands around it that can't be touched. And some of the abuders here mentioned that they bought their house that way, and they went to Great Plains to make sure that they weren't contract-defending on that wetlands at all. So my understanding is that this is to determine whether in fact this will happen, so this is an if situation, not a when.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I didn't mean to say this development will happen. I meant to say that a development could happen on upland.
Right. So I just wanted to clarify, I understand that it's sensitive area, and that there's a lot going on, because we're talking about five households potentially on this property, and that that would be a significant amount of, probably coming from the sewage that would be coming from each house. But as long as the living well is close by, I just wanted to clarify that we ought, there will be wells there that the people, if this were to happen, the people there would need enough wells right there in order to supply the residents of that area with water. So I just wanted to clarify, ask some clarification around that.
Sure.
We'll give Janet a break for a second.
But the, all the wells need to meet border health setbacks, and Title V actually has separate setbacks that a well has to be away from the sewage disposal systems. And bold in with all the wells that we work with the border health on, once they're drilled, they need to ensure that they have sufficient flow and that the water coming out of them is suitable. And this, this will be the same case here, where we won't have any exceptions to that. And then the wells would have to meet all the state's requirements for being the appropriate distance from both the sewage disposal systems and the stormwater systems, which are both putting water back in the ground. The wells are very deep, though, so that the interaction between these things on site, they meet the state minimum, there's quite a separation between where the well is drawing from and where the systems that are close to the service are.
So it's not horizontally, but vertically, you're saying?
Yeah, I have, you know, a typical well, I'd have to talk to the border health, but 200 feet deep probably wouldn't be out of the question on these.
I mean, it looks like a lot of this is razor-thin and dependent upon people in the future making sure they do exactly the right thing. So, I mean, you talked about the road can't be the regular width of a normal driveway because it's too close to the wetland, and someone in the following, so you take following into consideration that they...
Well, a regular driveway is 12 feet wide, this is, is 15 feet wide with an additional five-foot shoulder. So it is quite a bit bigger than a regular driveway, and then it flares out to a much bigger distance. But those are all things that are being taken into consideration in designs.
Yeah, but the typical single-family house driveway usually don't have two-way traffic on it. You're talking about 12 families with, with quite a few cows. I'm concerned about that, actually. That is an issue for me, because, you know, the passing of cows, particularly during the winter when it's icy, is an issue, and I think you ought to think about that. We have, and I just want to be clear, there's different numbers that are being thrown up. This is an eight-unit project, okay? Of those eight units, six of them are two-bedroom, two of them are three-bedroom. So we have a total of 18 bedrooms, eight units. There are private driveways, common driveways within this town, as you've said, service four or five homes. Those homes could have four to five bedrooms per home. And they have a turnout every so many feet, specified by planning. So the cars can pass, and they have to be kept clean during the winter for, for prowling. So, I mean, that, that is a difference. Well, that's a 12-foot driveway with a turnout. We're only 100 feet long. In fact, the width that's 15 feet wide is significantly less than 110 feet.
We're, we're 200, maybe change, feet long total, but the portion of the driveway after a length of 100 feet, 110 feet, I believe, from the road, it flares to a full 24 width, and then even wider after that. So we're, we're dealing with a very small distance where we have that 15-foot pave width plus the five-foot shoulder. So that's 20 feet right there, which is, is typical of many of the roads in this town. So there is room to pull over and slide past each other in that small distance. And I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but perhaps Erica can chime in, but on a shared or common driveway, the distance for a pullout, it would be much longer between the pullouts than what we have before we reach a full 24-foot width there.
Right, it's 300 feet.
So 300 feet would be where we would have to have the pullout. So we're, we're well under that, so we're providing that distance.
So if we envision, so if we envision snow, lots of snow in the winter, for lucky, flying the snow to the sides of the driveway, and we're picturing kids walking up and down the driveway, they get to the school bus and back, and then you've got cars coming, is there a specially, especially, you know, this time of year when it's dark, is that all going to work okay? Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, it'd be no different than a residential driveway that's serving the shared or common drivers, which are, could have more bedrooms, as Attorney Shane's pointing out.
And so the five-foot shoulder is on the wetland side?
It is on the upland side, away, away from the wetland.
Away from the wetlands. Now, is that, when we did the sidewalk, is that, is there going to be a wall there?
There is a wall.
Okay, so there's a retaining wall, and then you've got wetlands on the other side?
There's, there's a significant portion of upland, the, just move for a second. So our roadway is right here. This is existing metal. The white area is an existing portion of metal that, that's going to be enhanced to provide better habitat. And then this green area is existing vegetation that would be untouched. The wetlands are at the edge of that, so we have, right here is roughly 50 feet from the edge of wetlands.
Okay.
And that, that varies up and down the length of the driveway.
Okay, so the driveway itself is, sorry, so the driveway itself, is that the place that comes in and narrows a little bit, and then comes up to the?
I'll move my pen for you. You can tell me. This is going to follow the driveway where it's the gray area.
Yes, yeah, so the light gray, that's, that's, and then there's a wall on this side, the retaining wall is...
Yeah, there's a wall here, and then it flares, it starts getting wider in this area. And this is basically designed to allow a full-size SU30 vehicle, so 30-foot long vehicle to do a full forward moving, and turn in that area.
Okay.
I think that comment you made earlier about the straight sightline of that short space is actually valid, too, because people...
Yeah, someone was pulling in, you would clearly see them.
Whether you're going to run into traffic, you know, if you're going to be running down the road, and I also am trying to run into somebody. So we'll go to a question here in the left room.
Hi, Bob Marchout, 302 Bonehead Road. I had two questions. First is in relation to clearances. There's been mention of clearance requirements for both septic and stormwater to wells. And I know the location of the wells that are going to feed this property are, are defined on the plans, or there's neighbors directly across the street who have wells that could very well be within 100 feet of, you know, either the stormwater or the septic, depending on where they ultimately end up residing, and how, you know, within the context of the plans, are we making sure that neighbors' wells meet all the clearances and not just the well, the wells that will be located on the property?
So the Town of Alton requires wells to be a minimum of 50 feet from property lines. The Still River Road, right-of-way, I don't know the exact width from its sideline to sideline, so the width of the public way is probably around 50 feet for that, and maybe bigger. And then our systems are offset from our own lot line. So if you take into consideration the required setback for a well of 50 feet, and you take into consideration the right-of-way of 50 feet, we would be at 100 feet, which is the required setback for a septic system to a well. So assuming that everybody's wells were constructed in accordance with the rules, we would exceed the required setback.
But you'd have to figure, I mean, that'd have to be done before anything was, septic was put in any, but you'd have to...
All septic plants will show a button, walls within 300 feet of the site generally.
If you're discussing my well, Kathy Anassas, 448 Still River Road, my well is not 50 feet from the road. We've been there for 42 years. Who knows if that was the requirement at that point, but it is not 50 feet from the road, for sure.
Make sure that we get the border health records and, and show that well appropriately.
But I've asked for that, I've asked for that clarification till I'm blue in the face, and I still haven't gotten it. But the road, the width of the road, it's Still River, is 45 feet wide, and I'm definitely not 50, our well is definitely not 50 feet from the road.
Who's your answer, Steve?
448.
448.
448.
My second question had to do with nitrogen levels. So a while back, I spoke with Jessica Slade from the border health. She mentioned to me back in 2015, when this project was reviewed in the context of a single-family home, he had some recommendation for some kind of nitrogen treatment system because he felt that was necessary, given the plans at that time. Given the plans now and the added volume that we're talking about in terms of, kind of, the septic and stormwater, I'm wondering, you know, is that still an applicable concern? And how do we ensure nitrogen levels in, you know, surrounding drinking water won't be adversely affected by the final plan?
Okay, so Chris is right there. Yes, we did, and we asked for a fast system on that because it was going to be less than 100 feet to the wetland, which is our local regulation. And it's pretty much belt and suspenders, because state takes a position that if a Title V system is constructed and maintained properly, you can put it 50 feet from a wetland, and the wetland should be harmless. So anyway, we asked the applicant for this, they said, fine, we'll be happy to do it. So we took the belt and suspenders route, and asked for a fast system for some additional predigestion before the leach field that was going to be closer to the wetlands. In this case, as has been mentioned, Title V will probably rule. In this case, as has been mentioned, Title V will probably rule. The first things that always gets thrown out is any local regs if this gets appealed to the state at any level. So it's a given that they have to meet Title V. And if they're meeting Title V, we'll probably be compelled to write the permit or fight a losing court battle. And we've already lost one of those. We just do not wish the town's money again. We know we're going to lose. And Title V is a pretty good document, basically. I'm not really worried about it.
So woman here and then we'll go.
I want, Rhona Balco, Green Road 207. I wanted to know if the town or with some of the private citizens would be willing to purchase this land to not let it be developed?
So your question, Rhona, is, are we aware?
Would the town partner with some people to buy this land so that it is not developed?
I think that's a question to the selectmen, not to the ZBA. You know, I mean, the town's taking opportunities and other things, but I don't.
Yeah, that would have to be discussed before a selectman, and that would eventually, that'd have to go through town meeting.
I have another question, I think there's one question.
Yeah, I'm Eric Johnson. I'm at 436 Still River Road directly across. I'm also an attorney, just to the extent that that's relevant. I want to express my concerns, not only on behalf of the neighbors, the butters, but all of the residents of Bolton, who are represented here by you folk. We have not only well-documented impact on our properties in terms of the potential impact on the groundwater, our wells, the flooding on the street, which has been historic that the DPW has been dealing with several years now. We're also dealing with the fact that all of our properties have bought this wetlands so that anything that happens, anything that goes wrong now or in the future is going to affect all of us. But there's also the question of the whole town itself. The property's an extremely sensitive environmental ecological area. It's of historical significance in terms of Native American history, the history of the settlement of Bolton. Still River Road running from Harvard Common through the villages Still River, on into Bolton, along the Bolton Flats, along the Still River to the Lancaster Town Line. It's one of the prettiest roads, not only in the Commonwealth, but all of New England. You're all familiar with the road, but I urge you to take a drive from Harvard Common down Still River Road and realize this is the first thing you're going to see as you enter Bolton on Still River Road. Now, people here are talking about you gotta give it to them. You don't, okay? Certainly, we don't meet one of the safe harbor tests, but the statute's still pretty clear. And even HAC's handbook is pretty clear. You're required to ensure that your consistent, your decisions here, denying the permit, granting waivers and exemptions, has to be consistent with local needs. And what that means is you need to balance the need for affordable housing, again, local health, safety, open safe space, as well as site and building design concerns. In this situation, as far as the balancing act is concerned, it's two units, offset by six. As the Harvard Town Planner has illustrated, the beneficial effect on affordable housing in Bolton is negligible. It would take 55 projects of this type. This property has been described as an island surrounded by wetlands. There's overwhelming documentation that the local concerns about health and safety of the residents of the neighborhood, the residents of the proposed project, and of the entire community, as well as the serious deficiencies in the building and site design contained in the proposed project, can't be resolved by haggling, and it can't be resolved by attaching conditions of approval. And you really should deny this comprehensive permit. Requiring that the developer comply with our local requirements is absolutely necessary to meet all the concerns arising with this project. And it's the very standard that this law requires you to basically meet. Don't let the developer use the fig leaf of 40B to hold this town hostage. This is the wrong project for the wrong place. And, oh, by the way, as an attorney, I have lots of friends that do this kind of work. There's pro bono written all over this. Don't be afraid.
I don't think it's fair to, I'm on ours, on the board side. You know, we're chartered as part of the, which is the town, as you're able to hear the applications. So we take, we'll take all the pertinent information, we'll take town feedback, we'll take your impassioned comments, we'll take the advice of our peer review, the advice of our consultants, and we do. I think we've been involved, I want to say six or seven 40Bs, and none of them have, none of them have been proformed as far as just to say stamp it. We know we can, we know we can deny them, we know we can.
Oh, you guys are doing, look, you're doing a terrific job. You're.
No, it's not about, I was just saying, so we, we will certainly get to that conclusion if we don't think that it holds the standards of the 40B that we would lay down that road to affect a decision one way or the other. But so, so while we do hear some of them say, yeah, it has to be approved, we're aware of the fact that it's sensitive and that it's, it's not one way or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, question.
I have one question regarding the timeline, Tim. Brian Marby, I'm 25 Man of Road. I also serve on the Conservation Commission, and this hasn't come in front of us yet. But regarding the attorney's timelines, which I can understand and the reasons why you want certain approvals before you go for certain other approvals, does that need to happen that way? And the reason I say this is, for you to offer waivers when they were showing where the wetlands are, right? It's 25 feet away, but we have a 75-foot buffer zone that we may take off of those boundaries, right? So that entire driveway ends up being in the buffer zone. And when it comes to these things, our purview as conservation is first to avoid, second to minimize, and third to mitigate possible. As far as avoiding goes, if you approve waivers and certain things, they do their engineering, it comes to us, we think, we want that whole driveway moved. We need to move that whole driveway. When it comes to minimizing, we're going to ask the opposite of the fire department. We want that whole driveway shrunk, not expanded. Fire department says one thing, we say another. You know, their safety might trump our safety, but the environment is a health and safety issue for our town. There's a lot of questions that will come into play when it comes to minimizing, going from a single-family septic system to eight-family septic systems is not, I'm sorry. I understand why they say they want to do their timeline, timeline the way they want to do it, but does that mean as a town we have to do it that way? I can understand wanting to get your engineering in place before going to natural heritage, but what if natural heritage says, you know, we see this, you have to change all your engineering? Are they going to say, our engineering's in place, you know, can natural heritage come up with a better plan to conform to our engineering? Why can't we hear from natural heritage first? Why can't we hear from conservation first and then make a decision? Is there a reason we can't, other than, I mean, I appreciate your timeline, I don't want to make it more expensive for you, but I care about the people in town more.
I would agree. I think that the process should be going on the table before we make a decision. And if that's not acceptable, then we'll have to deal with that. But I, I do not want to be going into this with half the evidence. And if that's not, you know, acceptable to the applicant, well, we'll deal with it. I mean, I just, I'm not prepared to vote any way on this, on this project as of right now. I have some many, many concerns, and they haven't been, you know, dealt with. So it's early in the process. My only concern is we're getting to March, and then what happens? So. And if you people don't have any input by then, I'm going to have some real problems with that.
So I think, right, so is that point, I think, we're, I think the applicant is.
He knows what the deal is.
More motivated to address, respond to the concerns. We have the team of, you know, our support experts that can help us if they have information provided. And we all know the goal is to, it's one of the viable project that has to, you know, pass health, safety, all those conditions and whatnot, so. We'll get to some logical conclusion within a couple months, you know.
But we need, we need, we need the evidence before we can do that.
I'm sorry. So let's, we had some boards here. I think we've exhausted a lot of time. We may have some of the boards give some input. We've had a good, I think, a good half hour or more of the butter, or a pop of, I'd say tenured questions, but I'd like to shift a little bit over to the boards that are here just to be sure that we don't waste their time going to a meeting and not be. So who's here from a board?
The boards, commissions, and committees.
The board commission, that would like to offer some input. So we have one here.
Mr. Chairman, Martha Remington, Chairman of the Board, pardon me, Historical Commission. I don't think this has been brought up before. I do think you are aware of the archaeological significance of this area near Still River and these wetlands and this particular lot. I would like to see in any document that's put out for this project that there be some way to retain archaeological artifacts that are discovered when the backhoes go in and start ripping this up, because I don't think that they should just be reburied. I know there will be a lot of artifacts, and I think we should have a requirement, an informal, at least, requirement that says things that are found, Indian relics and things should be retained and returned to the town rather than just shifted around in all of this construction. Thank you.
Any other boards or commissioners, and then we'll, we do have a couple of hands up, but I just want to give anyone an opportunity for the town representatives. So I guess we're not going to, we'll go back to here.
Annalisa Still River Road. I just have a protocol question. You've alluded to a deadline of March 23rd. Could you explain to the rest of us what that means? And is it our deadline or their deadline? Or I don't know where to go first here.
I can speak to about, I don't know, I defer to Joe, because it's part of the 40B in the mass loss process.
Certainly. Again, Joe Puznola, I'm the board's 40B consultant for Mass Housing Partnership. The regulations that govern Chapter 40B are 760 CMR 56. And within that regulation, it revised the regulations in 2008 to include this 180-day timeframe. So from the open of public hearing to the close of public hearing, the board can only spend 180 days. Now, that 180 days can be extended by assent of the applicant, should the board feel and request they need more time. And many times, it is because the applicant sees that they're moving towards potentially an approval with conditions, and there's a spirit of cooperation, and the applicant agrees to that. But at the same time, the applicant doesn't have to. If the, if the board does not act within 180 days, it's, it's a constructive denial. Essentially, the applicant would have to go to the Housing Appeals Committee and claim that they didn't receive the action within 180 days, and the Housing Appeals Committee would have to take action.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add to that, too, that I believe the board has 40 days after the public hearing process to actually write your decision.
Yes, from close of public hearing.
So you just spend additional time to get those.
Forty days to, and then there's a 20-day period from the, from the filing of the decision with the town.
So there's a roadmap. It's sort of in 40 lines. We're trying to do the right thing. Okay, so woman here and then the gentleman in the back.
Follow-up question to that, so thanks for calling me first. In St. John's, Still River Road, Mr. Puznola, in, follow-up question to what you were just saying. So this excerpt from 760 CMR 56.05, section 56.05, number three, for lack of a better description. Except with the written consent of the applicant, the public hearing shall not extend beyond 180 days of the initial public hearing. The 180-day limit presumes that the applicant has made timely submissions of materials in response to reasonable information requests by the ZBA, and that there have not been any significant changes in the proposed project during the public hearing. If significant modifications do occur, the ZBA will normally ask the applicant to consent to an extension of the 180-day limit. So my question is, if the wetlands or natural heritage comes back, is that considered a major change? Is that something that would be a reasonable request by the ZBA to, to ask for consent by the applicant for, because that's new information?
Definitely. And, you know, part of my job is to help the process move smoothly and to document the requests and the transfer of information. If, if there's delays, then certainly the board should, should document those delays and justify it. There are major changes, they should do the same, all to complete the record. So in the event that the board feels fully justified in getting an extension, and the applicant doesn't give that extension, and the board's forced to essentially act on what they have before them, which in, in certain circumstances would be a denial, we just don't have enough information. Then at HAC, then they would consider that record, they would consider what happened, and they may, HAC has the power to get into discussions with the, with the board and the applicant to possibly go back and remand it and finish the process. So it's all about documenting and making sure that things are moving forward. But I'm in a similar role in Wayland, and there's two 40Bs before that zoning board at the same time, and both are in their 20th month, all with the continual assent of, of the applicant to, to continue those processes. I'm not saying that that's going to happen here, but it is very common.
Thank you.
And we have done, we have gone that route. We have had projects that went on, we documented, we took the Housing Commission, we remanded back because, you know, I mean, it's part of, that we've sort of forcing, getting the information to us, you know, and then back to us, and the applicant had to then do that one, so we could actually continue. So it's not an unusual process, or we're not unaware of the process, but we have to at least start with that milestone of that 180 days, you know, because if we get to the constructive denial, that doesn't help the town.
I'm thinking of things like big, major developments.
Right, so if we had a big, major development, stumbling block in a project, I'm sure even peer reviews would be saying, no, Pitt and Hawn would be saying, no, our consultant would be saying, no, you know, our board members would be saying, let me do it. So, and we'll be listening to the audience as well. Question in the back.
Hi, I'm Joe Perkel, 305 Vonnhe Road in Bolton. A question about the stormwater drain system. I know it's going to be serviced annually and quarter, and quarter be checked on. I know there are probably great order of conditions, I assume, that would be part of the homeowners association. And we know that the homeowners associations, they have no idea about these kind of systems. So to get somebody that's knowledgeable about it at the homeowners, to take care of that system through the homeowners association, it's probably going to be difficult. And we know how mistakes are made, we know what conditions I've always followed, and they've made their mistakes. What's the ramifications of the system not being serviced properly? I know they've requested maybe derotation every, over 10 years, 15 years after the place is built, initially when things start to fail. What's the ramifications if some system, if the stormwater drain system isn't properly maintained, what adverse side effects that may happen if it's not properly maintained over the, annually?
So one thing that you will be able to.
So, one thing that you will be able to notice is the subsurface infiltration system is piped to catch basin that's in the driveway and a trench that's in the driveway, drainage trench. There'll be a grate on top of it. If the system starts to fail, it will start backing up and it, and you'll see it coming out of that catch basin. So, if, as soon as, I mean, that, that's a long way. I mean, they, that's, you know, 10 years, 20 years down the line, all of a sudden there's no water going in the catch basin. They basically have to go in and clean out the whole thing. And, yeah, you want to do it annually to keep out longer, it's kind of like a septic system. The more you do it, the longer it lives. So, the goal is to do it regularly. If all of a sudden it starts to fail, you'll see it, you're going to visually see it failing because the water's going to come out. They have to, if you immediately can go in and have a contractor go in and take out their shop back and suck out all the stuff, or then they excavate out the entire system and start again.
So, excavate the whole driveway system to get at the system if needed?
Not to, not to regularly maintain it.
No, but if it's issue with it.
But if it was totally to fail.
Whole shutdown.
And you couldn't clean it out, they would have to excavate up.
And then how would the residents get back and forth?
Yeah, well, yeah, that would, exactly. That's what.
And then the wetlands and then the abutters and.
Yeah. But that's, the goal is to maintain it so it doesn't.
Yeah, but who's going to maintain, I mean, I've, no one really has the knowledge to maintain a type of system. So, it's costly and it's time consuming and mistakes are made all the time without any replication, so it's just tough.
I'm sure the owners will have some vested interest in showing that their property's being kept. But, Mr. Chairman, I, just speaking based on similar situations, whether it's 40B condominiums, a lot of times you'll even see a single family residential development that has private roads and private drainage and, and they have a homeowners association. This development will have a homeowners association. Homeowners associations are actually very effective methods or organizations for ensuring these kinds of things, and I'll tell you why. The requirement to maintain these annually, to inspect them quarterly, whatever the ultimate defined maintenance program is through this board, through your conservation commission could have a second separate requirement, all of that will be in these permits. These permits will be then recorded at the registry of deeds. They will be made part of those condominium documents or the homeowners association documents. Banks that lend money to people to buy these require assurance with the homeowner's documentation and, and program. So, we found that the homeowners associations are very diligent in following those requirements because it has a tremendous effect on the permits that underlie their, their homes, their mortgages, everything. So, it is important and your homeowners associations do take this seriously. And it is not difficult or expensive to maintain these systems. In fact, a lot of landscape companies, different, you know, outdoor organizations provide this service. We've seen requirements where we, the condominium association, has to actually provide, whether it be your conservation commission, your zoning board, whichever board puts it in place, a copy of the signed contract for the maintenance of that system. And we're required to provide a copy of the results of any testing and any maintenance and show that it was, you know, that the system was cleaned on this particular day. And that's a requirement of, of these permits and it's, you know, part of the homeowners association documents. If that's not followed, yes, there could be physical effects, but if the homeowners association doesn't do their annual maintenance, they don't provide, say, the conservation commission with a copy of their contract or a copy of the results or a copy of the receipt showing that it was done, building inspector time. Building inspector can then issue a, you know, a notice of deficit or a, technically they could threaten to pull occupancy permits. So, there is a mechanism for policing this and the people who live here have great incentive to make sure they don't mess it up. Certainly, their banks are a major incentive because if they violate any of the terms of the condominium documents, banks can pull their mortgages. So, there are a series and layers of protections and the homeowners associations and the requirements within the permits that are usually well defined as to deliverables and timing. It is a very effective system. It really is. I mean, we all as individual homeowners, for those of you who own individual homes, I live in a condominium, so I deal with this. You have a responsibility to maintain and ensure that your septic systems are cleaned and operating incorrectly, yet you don't have any obligations to provide that information to anyone or to make sure it's done. So, you know, we all have personal responsibilities. In this kind of a situation, that responsibility is not only heightened, but it's structured and controlled. So, I, I appreciate and I do understand your concerns. Nobody wants these systems not to be maintained because then they don't work and then they won't provide the protections that we're saying they will. But you have to understand there are controls, there are mechanisms.
People make mistakes, things get done by mistake without intention and things get passed on because of that. So, this is the same thing, 10 years from now, we hate to have something happen, say, you get a chance to nip this in the bud before anything went wrong. It was already sensitive to begin with, you add all this extra flow from the storm drains.
Your point is, is we won't make that.
Okay, thank you.
That we have to ensure that there's some due diligence during it and then thereafter. So, let's.
Can I make one?
Sure.
I know, look, one thing Erica said was concerned about if it overflows, it overtops and fails, it's going to go towards the road. The applicant, you know, we could request that they put an overflow device that would go towards the wetland. The one thing that's nice about the catch basin is that it's very visible, everybody walks by and everyone's going to see it. As soon as they put a pipe that's going out towards the wetland in the back of the house or something, it's just not as visible. So, but it's definitely doable and it would be just a chain, you know, another pipe. So, if something that people, maybe conservation commission wants to think about it, whether that, I assume that that is something that's, I mean, I didn't actually comment on it, but I assume that you could add an overflow pipe and it'd be feasible. But I, I like the catch basin and be able to see it, you know.
So, we're getting on to, it's after nine, so let's try to bring this to a conclusion because we're going to have to schedule them up here anyway. So, we have three more hands up and then we're going to stop there. Okay, so, start from the back and work from there.
Okay, thanks. Pat Westwood, or Joan. First, I think the engineer spoke looking for the town to report. I apologize, I didn't pick on you when I said people are saying, you know, we have to stop this, sorry. It's just sort of been the way people can talk about this. So, I live across the street and up the hill a little bit and I'm in one of these very sandy areas and my sub pump is pumping, pumping, pumping all the time. It's, so it's not supposed to be doing that, but it is for whatever it's supposed to be drainage, but it's, it's not working. So, my question is, if, not in 10 years, but if this gets built and if in a year, everyone has done what they're supposed to be doing and yet we've got a flood in the street, we've got other problems with wells and, you know, things may not have been done perfectly, building it, we don't know. One, who enforces taking care of this? And two, who's responsible for it if the builders have finished and, and gone away and yet then maybe the test, you said you're going to do a second bid. Maybe it's like my house that's supposed to be drained, I have great drainage, but it doesn't. Who, who was responsible for taking care of a mistake in one year, six months or one year or whatever if this does go through? Thanks. And who enforces it, who makes sure that happens?
I have an opinion. I have an opinion, but I'll be right.
The homeowners is a sensation, right?
Well, yeah, I, I would, first, I think the homeowners association is responsible, but it would either be the building inspector, in my opinion, it's either the building inspector because people are calling and saying what's going on, or it's the conservation commission because their wetlands are the closest and they have the resources.
But the builder is not held accountable for that, is not responsible for fixing it?
The builder, well, the homeowners association is probably going to go after the builder, but the town probably, you know, that, it's, it's, that's illegal.
That's a very good question.
I'm just mentioning it. But, but I, you know, that's how the kind of the train goes. So, people start seeing, wait, it's failing, what's going on? They call the building inspector, what's going on? The building inspector calls the conservation commission, they say, what's going on? Conservation commission says, hey, you guys go to clean this up because you're ruining our wetlands and let's stop it and they call homeowners association. Call them.
Annalisa Stilley Road. I'm a little confused. I'd just like some clarification. Can this board require the applicant to do the wetland delineation to, to get that so that we can verify what we're actually talking about? Because it seems as though we have these meetings and we're going back and forth and all around and the, the crux of the matter is where exactly is the wetlands? And until we know that, I don't think anybody can make a decision about anything. So, do you, my question is, do you have the authority to do that, to make that requirement? And would you?
Yes.
Yeah, just clarification on a few things with regards to the interrelationship between the boards and the jurisdictions. This board is solely within the jurisdiction of Chapter 40B and the promulgated regulations. That regulation only requires that the applicant provide preliminary information. So, the whole process is, is kind of toolled around a review that's somewhat handcuffed, if you will. Because of that, in certain circumstances, applicants have not developed their plans to a level of detail sufficient to support an application to a conservation commission or a board of health under the State Wetlands Protection Act and Title V. And purposefully delayed submission to those, those boards and commissions until after issuance of the comprehensive permit. And to a degree, the regulations are built, are designed that way because of the requirement for only preliminary plans, which is unfortunate, but that's the way the regulations are. So, the board needs to be prepared to act solely within their jurisdiction. The, the applicant has made, made statements with regards to their desire to, to get a little bit more certainty in some of the, the engineering aspects and then, then they would be willing to maybe go into those venues, but there's no requirement nor can the, can the board compel them to do that. I would, what I would do with regards to advising this board, the conservation commission and the board of health is to focus on the local, the waivers that are requested from those local bylaws and regulations that those boards normally work with that are now subsumed into this process and the, and the jurisdiction of this board. And to provide input to this board as if they did have that jurisdiction and they were reviewing the plans, but in a, in a little bit different light. If the conservation commission was asked to, to look at this plan under their, their bylaw and, and their local wetlands bylaw, they would look at it very differently. But what they need to do is, is look at the, the role that the board is under, under 40B and the balancing test that, that one of the neighbors had talked about, the need for affordable housing versus these local concerns, coupled with the waivers that are requested under those, those bylaws and provide thoughtful input as to, A, can the waivers be granted in a, in a manner that, that could provide the protection intended, but with, with possible mitigation or changes to the plan or conditions of approval that would, that would safeguard, safeguard that. One, a perfect example is the FAST system, the additional nitrogen treatment, as it pertains to the waiver request for a less, lesser than offset from the septic system to a well. So, as part of mitigation, would it be possible for the, for the, for the applicant to introduce nitrogen treatment that might be able to justify or compensate? So, in, in other words, if this met the local requirement of 100 feet, then you wouldn't have to provide that nitrogen treatment. But in way of mitigation for a shortened setback, could there be pre-treatment that, that provides that equal, but not, but an equal result, if you will? So, I, I think it's that kind of thoughtful back and forth and, and advice that the boards and commissions can give to this board in what is a very difficult position they're in to have to deal with this comprehensive permit law. It's, it's something that all towns don't really want to deal with, but, but because of the law, they, they have to deal with it and, and the position of the, of the town being under 10%. So, it's certainly, certainly something that, that can be done, but it needs, it needs the input and cooperation of, of, of the boards and commissions.
I, I think I'm missing something here because I understand the input and the waivers and the give and take here, but the question is, how can we discuss whether or not it's on the wetlands or off the wetlands or the buffer zone or how far it is from the buffer zone unless we know exactly what the wetlands delineation is?
And I, and I appreciate that and I understand, but it's, but, but the location of the wetlands line is not within the jurisdiction of this board. And it's not, it's not, it's not required for, the board can't stop this process and compel the applicant to do something that's beyond their jurisdiction. So, what, what, what happens is, just, just, just so you know. So, they, they deliberate and, and decide on a waiver request, let's focus on the wetland setback, waiver request. If, and, and the board grants that waiver and the comprehensive permit is issued and then the applicant goes to the conservation commission and the conservation commission contests the, the location of the wetlands line and through that process, they define the line differently. And instead of, instead of 60 feet from the wetlands, the, the septic system is 55 feet. Now, that's a material change that needs to be brought to this, this board to say, hey, the comprehensive permit was issued with a waiver to 60 feet, we need to modify that, that distance, that waiver and it's now 55 feet. And there's a process for that.
Do you have to modify it? Can you say, no, it's had to be 60? They don't need it? I mean, you're forcing the other commission to make modifications.
Right. No, no, this board needs to make the modifications of the waiver that was granted under the local bylaw. So, so now this board has a decision to make. First is to, is to decide whether that change is substantial or insubstantial. If they decide that it's insubstantial, then it's approved. If they decide it's substantial, they need to set up a, a new public hearing and start this whole, this process again to discuss within the public hearing with notification of abutters to consider everything that was considered at that time, that modification.
I, I guess what I'm running into is, is being on a different commission. I understand we judicate differently, but they've asked for our comments, they've asked for us to provide input because this is a very big thing they're considering. I cannot give them input until I get what that official lie is because it's 100% different. Depending on what's an intermittent stream, what's perennial stream, where it's changed, I would say, I think you should deny the whole thing or I think we can petition this whole thing. But I can't, they're asking me for answers. I can't give many answers until I have some evidence as to where exactly the wetlands lie. Why wouldn't we grant any waivers until we can, like, I don't think they should grant anything until we can actually give them comment, we can actually figure out what the heck's going on there right now.
No, I understand the fight.
You know, that, that, but that touched on their board, you're saying conservation You're saying conservation's different, they have to rely on other things, but they're taking our input. We can't give them our input until we know what the heck's actually going on.
Your input is threefold. First is you're requesting that the board request to the applicant certain information that's needed for you to give proper input. The second is to, once given that input, comment on the actual waivers with regards to... And I would just, almost in, nine times out of 10, if not 10 times out of 10, a Conservation Commission and a Board of Health says, don't grant any of our waivers, don't grant any waivers to those. But I would say, thoughtfully look at that and look at the project and look at the balancing test that this board had that yours does not, and provide quality input. The last would be to offer suggestions for conditions or possible mitigation that might compensate for those particular waivers. So, with regards to the first point. Can there be thoughtful input that doesn't include an ANRAD, that doesn't include, you know...
Sure.
Where are the contention... Where are the contentions? Where are the waivers actually? Where are they closer than they should be? Are there any questions within those areas? And can they pinpoint? Is there information that can be provided that's not going to subject them to a parallel process that might just dissolve into nothing? I told you about the whaling projects. Part of the problem with the whaling projects was just that they were running parallel tracks with the ZBA and the Conservation Commission, and there were different motivations and different, again, different criteria for review and grant. And there was that crossover between the two that confused the whole process, that gave the board pause to be able to do their job. It was almost, there was too much input in, as far as not staying within the confines of the regulations and the intents of Chapter 40.
May I ask just one more general question?
So, one of the points, I just wanted to respond in that, as he said. So, we get to a point where we make a decision, and there are other... We make our decision, and that just doesn't allow, necessarily allow the applicant to then just start with construction. They'll have to go to other boards now, but they'll have at least that permit.
Right.
It's not lost on us that, to the point, if something comes back as a variation from a plan, or, you know, we've had hearings on other 4Bs that are, you know, in construction or where they had to come back and make that transition, is what is being happened insubstantial? And if it's not, then we have to open up the hearing. So, it's our... And, you know, we can be dragged into this for years, and you have to be, you want to just make a decision, get out of it. But again, there are big valid points that is the opportunity throughout the process once it is our board to have to formally come back to the board and open up for a public hearing, you know, again.
Right.
We can do the best due diligence with what information we have as we move along the process.
Right. I just think they'd like to be able to go to the state and say, will zoning board approve? You know, conservation's just being a pain, they won't let us do it. But zoning board already approved, we've got all these variances, obviously the project can happen, you know, this board's just being a problem, and then get their variances and get around us that way. Whereas, oh, the entire town is saying, we don't want this for a number of different reasons. I think it just looks differently when they can go and say, no, we've gotten approvals from all these boards, it's just conservation's being a pain in the ass. They get around this a lot easier than when it's like, no, all the boards are waiting because we want to know, we want to see if this project should be a go before we really put our time and effort into condition. That's the other thing. This is a volunteer board, just like ours. I don't want to look at 7,000 different plans. I don't want to have to condition this thing, have it come back to you, have it come back to us, have it come back to you. I don't want to waste our time. I think we should all look at it. I think we should run the things concurrently, and I think we should come up with one big plan. I hate the idea of kicking it back and forth, and I hate the idea of giving them half approval so they can take that to the court and say, oh, we got approved by these boards, you know, these boards are just being a pain. That's just my opinion, that's all.
So, we have one more question here, and then we have to close.
So, my question is relative to, I guess going back to Joe, maybe probably a better individual answer to the question. Jurisdiction of the board on a local level. So, you're stating the information we're providing to them is helping them with that balancing act, which I appreciate, and I try and look at all projects to that extent, to be honest. But, so could you just maybe summarize just time-wise what exactly they are doing as a board for the wetlands, the Board of Health, in terms of the waivers? Because how it was portrayed to myself through the regulations and also speaking with various individuals about 40B projects is that they are sitting as the local boards as well in terms of the waivers. So, is that true in that event?
Absolutely. That is absolutely true. The jurisdiction's subsumed into the single process. So, they are rendering a decision under the local wetlands bylaw and the local Board of Health to the degree it's not waived.
So, would it be beneficial then to provide comments such as, we typically wouldn't consider, or the commission wouldn't consider a project unless we had wetlands delineated? Things like that where it doesn't go into, we're requesting them to request someone to delineate it, but rather just providing them with the insight of how to look at, to try and balance or carry out that balancing act, but at the same time, understand that it's a catch-22 to a very great extent, which I think we're all aware of.
It's difficult because you couple the call for only preliminary information versus you would never allow that. You always want detailed information and demand it. But also, a lot of your rules and regulations and process have to do with your standards for rendering a decision, which are different than their standards for rendering decisions. So, that's why I say, look at the waivers and work backwards and to first focus on the information that's presented within the context of the waivers. And it's, the easiest one here is the setback between the septic and the wetlands, just because it's, everyone can understand that. So, what's the intent of that? The intent is to protect the wetlands. So, is there enough information that that's been provided to do that? And it may be no, because the wetland line's still in flux. So, now maybe there's a focus on where that pinch point is and maybe an agreement that, okay, the wetlands are okay there, so now we don't need any more information. But now, what is that distance serving to do? And if it's nitrogen, for example, maybe there's other ways to mitigate that. So, now that there's that discourse that goes back and forth, helping the board consider what your commission originally intended in putting that regulation into place. And I know that's a Board of Health regulation, but again, it goes to the wetlands. So, it's, it really, it's not as simple as just saying, well, we would ask for and we would do this because of all of those challenges.
Okay, so, we have this gentleman, and I said that we're going to have to come through. It's almost nine thirty, so let's see how, let him go, and then we'll leave you.
All right, thank you for recognizing me. Bob Murto, 302 Long Hill Road. I just wanted to stand up on the comments just made previously that we've been discussing. So, under the law, a determination must be made whether the need for affordable housing, excuse me, outweighs the local concerns, and whether the requested waivers will still allow the project to be protected of public health and safety. So, I think there's been an important nuance in this that has come up in recent years that I wanted to highlight here in public media, and then I've provided to you in written comment. In 2015, in our neighboring town, Stowe, there was a case of a Gregory Reynolds versus the ZBA, where the abutters had concerns about potential increases in nitrogen levels in his well owing to a 40B development where the local ZBA had granted waivers to certain local Board of Health bylaws. The court found in favor of the plaintiff upon appeal. And in there, in the court document, and I quote, "The plaintiff had identified an important local health issue maintaining clean groundwater servicing private wells that was not adequately protected by compliance with the applicable state standards," in this case Title V. It's implied that the local standards are necessary for drinking water safety, especially in the community where homes are serviced by wells, as ours is. Compliance with state regulations alone was deemed insufficient in this case. This is Stowe, Massachusetts, our neighbor. The court has clearly weighed in that the local Board of Health bylaws should not be waived in the interest of a 40B bylaw waiver request when the local well water standards for the abutters are at risk. So, my question to the ZBA would be, can you guarantee me that should the Board of Health requirement waivers being requested by the developer is outlined in the comprehensive permit application be granted? That I will not experience an increase in nitrogen levels in my well that will compromise my drinking water quality or that of any other abutters who are actually closer to the property than I am? So, in short, if you cannot guarantee a local bylaw deviation will not adversely impact the status quo, then there should be no deviations granted. And as the court noticed in the above referenced case, and I quote, and I think this is of particular significance, "Abutters have the benefit of presumption of aggriement." And I want to say that again. Abutters have the benefit of presumption of aggriement. So, there's some burden of proof that these things that we're being asked for waivers on will not affect us, abutters, when it comes to public health and safety, specifically drinking water. Thank you.
He answered my question. I wanted to know who the burden of proof, who had the burden of proof?
So, we got, let's see what we've got. I'll wrap the next meeting.
Yeah.
All right. On to...
We need to travel.
Yes.
After that.
This is the...
There you go.
Have a good time in Hawaii.
Thank you.
Wow.
You're a good person.
Oh, my God.
Are you giving a volley on the desk?
Yes.
Well, good.
Have a great time.
I hope you're in my way.
It's nice to know, thank you, guys. We go down there, you know, probably 20 times a year.
So, have a great day.
Your Jeffers?
What's your first name?
I'm Eric.
Joe and Chris.
We'll have to try to get together.
Yep, and like I said, 16th and 17th.
Also, I see on that...
Go to state, it's 17th.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got...
We have to move on to the side.
What do you open up inside?
And so, what happens?
Say that over.
How are your input?
My time involved.
We have the motion to move to one, two, three.
Seven, two, five.
No, I'm going to move to the other.
I still like that.
I moved the major.
Second.
Second.
My turn.